Somebody between you and trouble.
I am trouble.
Okay, let's go ahead and call our meeting to order. We've got a lot to cover. Minutes of reports received and filed?
Yeah, we did. April 2015, plans are being filed.
Liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events?
We've got Board of Realtors, Political and Economic Responsibility Committee meeting today, Board of Realtors, Board of Directors meeting tomorrow, Campo tomorrow, Chamber Barbecue tomorrow, Chamber, no, that's all. I think that's about it for me. Missing anything? Eleven o'clock meeting.
Yeah, I've got half region tonight, Chamber Barbecue, meeting with Carrie Thursday morning, I'm gonna speak at Quanis Thursday at noon. That Safety Net luncheon's also at 11:30 on Thursday, but I can't be at Quanis and Safety Net, so.
Who takes care of their grass cutters out there? If they're not cutting their grass, do they have anything?
I don't know. Being out there along the road.
Yeah, I had some complaints after we did all that work out there. It looks nicer, letting the grass get knee-high and it looks like crap. So, I don't know, if you're out there, you might just bring it in and see if anybody does anything, or I don't want to have to call the Health Department, but.
Larry out there mowing?
Well, we gotta mow it.
Larry does it, yeah. Thanks.
But it's not ours, is it?
Well, some of that right away is, but I might just gotta mow that once in a while.
Where's it at, Jim? Out there in Patchy Flats, along all them new, that new stuff we just did out there. It looks all nice and.
Probably, I doubt that they have any, like, to do anything, but the Health Department can make them do it once it gets so tall.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'd hate to do that, so if you're out there, you might mention it and see, see what they say once.
Okay.
Cause it's nice and easy for them to cut now. They used to have a big old ditch in there.
Okay, appointments by commission. I have a letter from Claudia Schoonover, who's the library director, and we've had two openings, I think, for quite a while, and they've had a request from Stewart Murphy and Kay Kasiski, who lives out in Loman, who would like to serve on the library's board. And talking with Jill and Debbie, and, you know, I have their information, their addresses, but they have both asked to serve on the library board, and Claudia would like to have them on the library board, so we just need.
I think we usually ask them to have a resume or something, send something, a little information about them, cause I don't know, I don't know. So, if they're interested in doing that.
Here's Stewart, and here is Kay. Kay was on the board before it was the River Region Library, and I don't know if she moved, but she, she would like to come back. Talking with Debbie, we don't have a, a form or anything for them to fill out, so we, we can create, we can create one.
Just have them fill out a quick resume and email it to us.
Here's Stewart's.
You can scan it and email it to me, Sam.
There's Stewart's.
And I'll look it over and we can put it on next agenda. We don't have to spend ten minutes talking about it.
Okay, all right. I will see if I can get a.
Got extra coffee in me today. It's eleven o'clock meeting.
See if I can get a resume from them, but anyway, okay.
Was that one a resume? Just scan it.
It's, here's his letter, here's his, yes.
There you go. There's one of them.
Yeah, and Kay, I don't know if she's retired or if she's.
Well, she can just put down her name, address, once she's done, retired.
Okay, then we have that. I'll give them to you, okay.
No paper, email.
Commission comments. Bids and contracts, signing of the Pringer HVAC contract.
We ordered this last week to Air Systems. This is the contract with the addition that work should, could, should be completed within ninety days of commencement.
I'd like to table that if we could, and I need to talk to some guys out there yet about the other bid that we had on there. I just want to clarify a few things before we sign the contract, if that's all right.
Need a week?
Yep, I'll give them a week. If they want to come up and they want to address it, then.
I think our next agenda's next Thursday, so I can give them a little more on that.
Okay, we will table it. Bid awards, 2015-22 courtroom mics, TVs, and speakers.
You guys should have the bid tab. We did expect two more local bids. We only got the one from the Entertainer in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred fifty-three, and what I'm told is that the funding is to be split fifty-fifty between Mark Richardson and Judge Joyce.
What? Hold on.
So, they will give us the money to pay for these?
Donnie, right?
Yes, I'll get it to you in the next fourteen days by then.
And then I'm told that we usually issue the contract after the money is spent.
Is this just up for the courthouse here?
This is for Pat, Judge Joyce's courtroom, because they hope, when people bring in their equipment and put it in there, you can't see anybody in the audience, so they're gonna put a TV on the wall behind the judge there so the jury can see it, put microphones in there so they can record it, and they can hear it. It's gonna be split between Judge Joyce and Mark Richardson paying for it. They said they could put it in the last of July, the first week of August, when Judge Joyce is on vacation.
So, I move we award the contract to the Entertainer for thirteen thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-two cents, pending receipt of payment from Judge Joyce and Mark Richards.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 2015-23.
Thanks, Donnie.
Thanks, Donnie. We received a bid for this from Joe Mokins Ford in the amount of seventy-three thousand five hundred ninety-four dollars. That's the recommendation.
It's like a seven fifty, or?
It's five fifty.
Five fifty.
Do we have budgeted for it?
That's, that is about what we had in our budget and figure, so.
Did we just get the one bid?
Yes.
Only one makes besides truck.
And that's a reasonable price then for what we're?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I move we award the bid for the nineteen thousand GBW truck to Joe Mokins Ford.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 2015-24, single axle dump truck.
Okay, and we got bids from Sheppers and Columbia Freightliner, Freightliner, and I did want to point out specifications that Columbia Freightliner did not meet the nine-point three liter or larger. There was a cost difference of nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars, and I think that's what, what they want to discuss here.
So, we just looking at the truck right now, or?
This, it's a tire setup. It's a truck.
Oh, I see, okay. I'm getting there, okay. So, let's talk about the engine. So, you know, one's a nine-three with three hundred and ten horsepower, the other one's an eight-nine with three hundred and thirty horsepower. So, look relatively close in torque, but, I mean.
Relatively close in torque. The only difference is the liters. It is a man, it is one of my specs that's in our spec bid, is a mandatory with a nine-point three. That's, it's kind of a decision we, we've always tried to stick to whatever. We work for a mandatory spec. That way, if, if the next time we get a bid, somebody doesn't actually bid us something smaller than, than what we've actually got in our spec. But it is nine thousand dollars. That's a, and most of that, I think, is on the actual truck itself. The chassis frame and stuff is all pretty much the same. It's the difference in what one gave for a trade-in and what the other one gave.
What, so, I mean, I guess, I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding, you know, is nine-point-three kind of the only size that International makes, and everybody else is a little bit less, or until you jump up to a bigger truck, or, I mean.
What we ran into on the past, Chris, is International used to bid six-point-seven.
Six, yeah, or sometimes they had smaller ones, and they kind of bounced around, so we, we tried to actually write our spec where we get as close to that liter as well we can in order to keep from getting a small engine turned up.
What we were finding is when they turn it up, it doesn't have the torque when they turn the smaller engine. Hindsight being twenty-twenty, we probably should've had a eight-point-nine in here instead of nine-three. To make it a level playing field, we were told that they had a nine.
I was under the assumption that, that both of them had something in that, very close to that range, or if one of them was a little higher than it, than, than a nine-point three, that they would be pretty close together.
So, so give me a recommendation. I mean, it got nine thousand dollars for a difference there, so.
What do you recommend, Larry?
I think both the bids are comparable. I guess where we're kind of asking for you all for guidance is eight-point-nine to nine-point three, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a truck guy.
And it's, it was in our, it was, it was part of my mandatory spec bid, so that's the reason we're kind of giving you, asking you for guidance on, you know, how far away do we want to step from what we put as a mandatory spec or not? I guess that's where we're at.
Can you give it to them if it's not, if it don't meet the specs legally?
I wasn't pulling the bids out.
It's like an alternate.
We also preserve the right to weigh capabilities and all that too.
So, we can, then.
I would assume that you could actually do that, yes.
But then we're gonna open a door for a whole bunch of this stuff.
Exactly, yes.
So, I mean, the way I see it as an eight-nine, that's an alternate bid. I mean.
That would be my assumption, yes, that would be an alternate.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't meet or exceed expectations, right?
Right.
So, they turned in a bid, but it, I, I see that as an alternate. I mean, I don't know, but.
Did they call you and say they were gonna put in an eight-point-nine liter bid?
No, they usually, a lot of times, and I've told a, a lot of them before that, whatever's in my mandatory spec, if they find a problem with it, whenever they get ready to bid it, do call, and we'll either change it or.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. If they told you beforehand, and you give everybody the opportunity to do an eight-point-nine or above, then they've avoided this.
That's in our spec too, whenever they actually get the sheeting on front of it, that if they find anything that's, they cannot bid on our, on our piece of equipment, that, that they could actually call us, and we could amend it if we would like to, and they have it, so.
So, I mean, it doesn't look like they're nine thousand dollars cheaper. They gave us nine thousand dollars more on a trade.
Yes, yes. That's where the, that's where it all comes together, is on the trade, what they allow for truck that we're turning in or trading in.
So, I mean, is Sheppers undervaluing the trade, or, I mean, do you have any idea, or?
I wouldn't.
I don't have no.
I wouldn't give you twenty thousand dollars for that truck we're trading in, but that's just me. When we're, when we trade a vehicle in, I mean, it's, it's a joke.
I hear everybody. We're the same way. Run until the wheels fall off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll remember that next time I'm on hard drive.
The thing that we've, we've got concerns on is, like I said, is whether we stick with the mandatory. One option is we throw it out, we can rebid it with an eight-point-nine. I can't remember if, if Tim Grimmer has already called and asked if he could submit an alternate bid if we consider the eight-point-nine, other than using the six-point-seven. Okay, my recommendation for that is not only no.
No.
We've tried that, it doesn't work when you, when you turn the motors up that high. They don't have the lugging power and everything else, so, you know, on our roads, when we're out on gravel roads, especially pushing snow, we need that lugging power when we're pushing or in soft material. We need that torque.
So, here's where I'm at on equipment. So, even though you may spend more at a local vendor, when it comes time to do warranty work, you take it back in town, and they take care of you a whole lot better, rather than going to Columbia. And so, that's why I deal with local people, you know, they're a little bit apart, it's, and in my opinion, it's worthwhile over time, but, and you got local parts, I assume, you got a pretty good relationship with Sheppers. I mean, I don't know, do you guys have any other Freightliner equipment?
At this time, we do not have.
Can anybody in town work on that, or get parts for that?
Probably, we could probably pick out parts through Sheppers for a lot of it, but as I have part warranty work, it would have to go back to Columbia Freight. That's the only reason this one, we didn't come in with a recommendation for an award, is because we wanted you guys to actually look at it, because we saw the, the big difference in the value of what they're putting out for nine thousand dollars for different zone, was all the reasons why we brought it into this direction. According to the spec, I would say we go with an International.
It's just a single axle. Did a lot of manufacturers not make a single axle dump truck, or?
International's hard to beat, hard to beat.
Right.
International Freightliner, I thought Mack would still make one, but we never get a bid from Mack or, for your bill, for your warrant, so.
I move we award to Sheppers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 2015-25S, alt materials.
You guys have the numbers in front of you, the recommendations towards the lowest bidder in each category, with availability.
So, I moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll go back to that single axle dump truck. Are we gonna change the bid specs next time, then, to be eight-point-nine, or are we gonna go to eight-point-seven, or eight-point-three, or two-point-seventeen?
Probably what I'll do is research it out again the next time we do it, and make sure that whatever I do right is gonna be comfortable for those of them to bid at, so, cause they will change from this year to the, the next time we bid another one, they'll probably change again. This tier, this tier four stuff that they're all going through right now is just a.
It's not, it's changing daily on the motors of the tier four emissions, so.
They, they're jumping every place, cause the federal government's making them put smaller engines in some of these trucks, because they have to sell so many of them in order to move them, and it's, it's, there's a lot of complicated stuff built with it, but, yes, they're, the next one probably will be.
Well, let's submit so we don't run into that again.
Yep.
If they would've called, Jeff, in all honesty, we probably would've had an eight-point-nine in there, we probably would've changed it, but they didn't call.
I know, and that's why I thought maybe it was an idea to throw them out and rebid it, but I agree with Chris. I think having that local warranty service is.
I think local, yeah, yeah.
Gonna end in the long run, probably save us a lot of money, driving it back and forth, towing it back and forth, so.
Hopefully, we don't do that.
That's a new truck.
So, Sheppers won't warranty it, do warranty work even if it's bought somewhere else?
Not on a Freightliner truck.
It's a different brand of truck. They're only an international dealer that can do factory work they can't do on a.
Now, they would do, they would work on it once it's out, once you.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking. I thought they could probably do warranty work too, but, all right.
Do we have any unfinished business? New business, proposed sanitary sewer easement at the Pringer Center.
Did that change again?
No, it has not changed.
I thought we've been bringing this about four or five times.
How's it going?
Well, thanks for your time. I guess we wanted to give you some background on why we need to do the big sewer project. Oh, when it rains, about a four or five inch rain, we get, the sewer actually overflows in the area of Monroe and Romar Place, and that's a block west of the Pringer Center. So, it's, it's been such a problem that we actually had to sign a consent order with the Environmental Protection Agency to do projects like this. So, we came here in October of last year, and design wasn't very good. We, we had the sewer main, it was too close to the building, and then we didn't have a very good plan for protecting the, there's an outdoor recreational pad behind the building with a fence, so we've got a new design, and we're closer to the creek, and then we're also boring under that with a steel casing, and then we're gonna stick a pipe through it. And we've gone back with, with county staff, and the, what the change does, unfortunately, is it, it displaces a couple of benches, and then there's several trees that are impacted, both getting right in the, in the way, or their roots would be hurt. So, what we're proposing is, you know, our contractor moves the benches out, and we place them back, and then they have to be, you know, well, well taken care of, they need to be as good condition as they were. And then the trees, we propose to plant eight new trees after we're done, and it'll be by, not, not by a general contractor, by public works for Jersey City, by somebody who knows what they're doing, and can provide a warranty and that sort of thing.
Okay, what do you need from us?
Well, we, we need an easement.
Okay.
Executed.
So, you have another set of plans on that, or has the easement changed, or is it?
Yeah, the easement did change. Sorry. Are you finding where it's going through this time? Before, we had some issues about where it was going through.
We're sure where it was going through. And everything's fine.
Okay. So, it's not going up Adams Street now? I mean, weren't, weren't you going up Adams Street and kind of coming down and then coming over?
Yeah, the original plan, like you say, it would, it would actually went between the outdoor recreational place and the building, so it went through an area where it shouldn't have gone, and then, like you say, hit Adams and went back to the creek. So, this is actually hugging the creek bank.
Okay. Did you see this, Jeff?
I've seen it three or four times before, and if you're finding where it's going through, I'm good with it. We had issues before about where it was going through, in case we ever wanted to add on or expand background back part, and it was getting back in that creek area, we was finding that, staying out of the other trees, park benches, whatever, all we had out there, so. I'm good with it.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
So, we need to sign this, too?
Yeah, at some point, if you're favorable.
Okay. I move we approve and sign the sanitary sewer easement with the City of Jefferson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Easy enough?
Thanks.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
I haven't got a copy of that one up here yet. My filing system's pretty messed up.
County clerk.
Hey, you guys are moving right along.
Yeah, we are.
I sent you the emails and the papers on it.
Get the, get the, get the mic.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, your employee, your employee, your employees give me grief if we don't do that, so.
He didn't do that, too, but, Donnie, a while ago, we was just waiting for you to jump back in. Now, I'll find it when we're done with it. There's the old one.
I sent you all the papers on that, you know, they, the hurricane, they lost their certificates, I guess, so they just want us to verify the amounts and stuff, so somebody from the county officer will have to sign that, and we'll get it notarized, if you guys are in favor of that. I, I checked it with our book, it all matches. Our, our book isn't filled out like their certificate is, but I did find some other papers in there that, that show that it is accurate, so, they just want us to verify the paperwork, so, somebody will have to sign it as an authorized officer of Co-County.
So, we had, we had records of who we issued the bonds to?
Yes.
And how much, and all that stuff?
Yep, yep, and I looked in the book, and it's all in there, and it's, it is correct. I had Kristen look at it, and I also let Jill look at it, so.
We're not changing anything, we're just verifying it?
Yeah, their, their records were lost in a hurricane, so they just want us to verify that this is true and accurate, and it is.
Yes, it's kind of amazing that they weren't, you always think of those as being.
Do we have to issue new ones, or?
No, it doesn't. They just want us to verify the amounts are correct, is all they want us to do, is sign that front page.
So, how do they redeem them?
We, we, we pay them every year. Every year, they send us a bill.
When the bonds come?
When the bonds come due, the amounts come due, they send us a bill for interest and stuff, and then we run it out. It's, it's always in our budget. Kristen keeps a running tab on it.
So, we just need a signature to approve that you verified them, is that right?
Yep. Yep, somebody will just have to sign it, and then we'll get it notarized, and we'll send it back to them.
So, I move that we approve the verification of bonds by the county clerk, Steve Courseby.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Moving on, the, the other thing is the, just the annual precinct report that we have to submit, it's in the statute, so I, I sent a copy of that to you also. Of course, the Jeff City Public Schools has asked us several times to vacate Morro Heights for safety school issues, and they're gonna do a lot of remodeling, so we're in the process of moving that. It's Ward Five, Precinct Three, we're gonna have to find a new location for it, and of course, the American Legion in Centertown's being sold. I know a few years ago, they spent a lot of money updating the handicap ramp and stuff there, some, you know, we, they got that all fixed up nice, but now we have to get out, cause they're selling it, so, we have to go back to the Centertown Baptist Church. There's really no other place in Centertown. We looked everywhere, and there's no place, so we gotta go back to the Baptist Church. There's a lot of complaints on the Baptist Church, because the handicap ramp there goes straight down to a wall, it's hard to get down the ramp, it's real steep, and you can't hardly get in the door once you get down there. So, there's some more grant money out there that the state's offering, so we're gonna have a guy submit a bid on maybe put, fixing the ramp, so we can get in and out of it. It'd be a, it'd be a state grant, so, but there's just nowhere else to go in Centertown. I don't know what else to do. There's no place else to go, so. They used to vote at the Centertown Baptist Church, and, you know, there's some guy in a wheelchair kind of complained about the ramp, but, so, we have to move it up there. Other than that, we're kind of looking at having viewer, fewer voting precincts, kind of shrink it down a little bit, kind of combining places. So, you know, other than a presidential election, where we have a huge turnout, you know, we have a lot of idle time with the workers and stuff, so we're thinking about shrinking that up, you know, making it.
Are you having a little more trouble getting workers, getting?
We had a lot of trouble last time, finding enough people to fill in. You know, we have four workers there, and a couple of them sometimes have a lot of idle time, so we're thinking, maybe if we increase the precincts, you know, then we can have more, they'll have more activity, so, that's what we're working on. And I guess you all have a copy of the report, so I don't know that it's, if that has to be approved, or it just has to be submitted, I don't know.
I think it just has to be submitted, so.
Just submitted, okay.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Can I bring something up to Steve from the last meetings, as far as the approval of those values for the TIF? Is that done, and am I okay to pay that bill, or do you know?
I certified the amount that Chris Estes had given me. Should we go ahead and look to check that on that TIF, Duncan Street TIF?
Yeah, I think the, the amounts I showed, and I didn't bring my own separate one matched Chrissy's.
So, I would assume it's okay. I don't have access to the numbers, it's in their computer, so I don't. Somebody else say either Chris or. Somebody else, either Chris or Larry has to verify those amounts, I don't, I don't have access to those, so...
All right, all right, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, check.
You can sign off on it.
Yeah.
Well, he did his...
He's signed off, he's got it.
Oh, he's already signed off?
He did the assessed value, and I, I signed off on the assessed value that he gave me, it did not match the, the report that the city had give us. So... I don't know where you wanna go from there, but...
We'll get, you sign off on it too, Larry, we'll just all sign off.
If Larry signs off on it, then...
We're good.
Sam will sign it.
I'll sign it, yeah.
Let Public Works sign.
Okay.
Yeah. He wanted me to cut grass for you all over here, so you open some way.
You got anything else, Steve?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Signing of surplus title.
Well, I have four, I have one that was, um, total, and three that just need to be, um, sold at auction, where they're all shares vehicles.
I move we sign the surplus titles.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Where do you want it? Signature of seller.
On the back.
Okay, I got you, I'll, I'll... Okay, Life Pac Fifteen ordering discussion.
Good.
Whenever we awarded this a couple weeks ago, um, I was given the direction to, um, see if we could order five in quarter four, and then the additional five in quarter one. Short answer to that is no, we cannot, um, in exploring that, I found out that we're actually gonna be, that physio across the board is gonna be having a price increase. They call it modest, we really don't know what that means right now. Um, I'm told that, um, they will know that their sales associates will be notified in late June, and the increase goes into effect on July 6th. I did kinda push him a little bit, again, he does not know, he threw out 5%, kind of is what's the word on the street. The handout I just gave you, what we're looking at is in the, the red or the pink or whatever you wanna call it. Basically, the 5% increase on five is gonna be $6,729. And then the 10 and the 12 are reflected there, too, what the difference would be based on 5%. I guess the way I see it, we sort of have three choices. We can order all 10 now, so that they're on the same maintenance schedule. We can go ahead and do as we were originally going to do, the five in quarter four, the additional five in quarter one, and just realize that we're gonna be experiencing a price increase close to what I, what I have on here. Or then three, I guess, order the five now... Which one did I already say? Order 10 now, order five in quarter four, and five in quarter one? Or, yeah, and then have the difference in maintenance schedules. So I guess we're just looking on direction, knowing that there is a price increase coming, what you guys wanna do, how you wanna handle the ordering.
So Mike said there was 12, that we needed 12 total.
Whenever, yeah, they mentioned that to me right before we came up here, whenever, for the purposes of my discussion, I was told 10, and I guess the other two were gonna be the next year...
I think where the lines got blurred was for the Lucas devices, those were 10. The initial for the monitors has always been 12, we have to have two in reserve. Uh, we can do the five and then the seven, however, just making sure we're on the same page, we need 12 monitors.
So however you wanna cut the pie, depending on when we order them, there's...
So they're gonna be 5% higher, approximately...
Unless, if we wait until July 6th or later to place them.
So if we order them now...
We could take advantage of the pricing as submitted.
And keep in mind, if, for discussion's sake, you get them all at once, it keeps everything as far as the maintenance contracts, uniform, and the same, when you start cutting the pie, if we have to, it's understandable, but from a maintenance agreement, trying to keep everything uniform, one bill, it would've said 12.
It's nice to be able to replace stuff more incrementally than it is to buy stuff all at once, and then, then you just get yourself in a, in a situation again where they don't, I mean, I don't know, maybe in the future, maybe we can kinda phase these out and, and transition into the Life Pac Twenty, or whatever it's gonna be, um...
We can do that, it's just the maintenance agreements. You, you have four or five purchases as you phase it in, you just have to keep in mind the maintenance agreements, as long as we can keep that straight, we're able to phase things in, it's not an issue, it's just the maintenance agreements is where it gets a little tricky. You have one, you have a 2014 model, and then 2015 model, and then a 2016 model, so on.
I'll have to follow the machine, though, and then when those become obsolete and we're replacing those, that we can do them in, uh, you know, five at a time, again.
Right.
I mean, it is, it is a lot easier to do that, it's a bigger, bigger pill to swallow if we do it all now.
Correct.
I guess, first off, do we even have money in your budget that would cover this? If we wanted to do all at one time?
Debbie is working on it as we speak.
And then what if we do use that money, if we pull it out of reserve and something else comes up in the middle of the year, are we gonna... Can we decide us, we gotta decide us by July?
July.
One?
And we're supposed to get notification at the end of June, so there is a small window where you guys could have real numbers, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention now.
So, at the end of June, they're gonna let us know what the increase will be if we don't... I'd prefer to just wait till then and find out what it is, 'cause if it's a 2% increase, we're looking at $4,000. And we can, we can eat that staggered replacement.
That's the only reason why we're here, just to give you the heads up, we can wait and find out hard numbers, as long as we all understand it's 12 monitors and Lucas devices, we're good to go. We, that's, we're here to your discretion and direction.
How do we decide what the number was for EMS for capital?
Well, we basically stuck within even 500,000, knowing all the equipment that we had, was still less than that, we were only about 280, and, uh... Right now, if you went to the 12 all at one time now, we would be short about 42,000. Before, I had figured 10, so that's what I had given you. So, uh, we have contingency within that fund, and, you know, use it as a contingency, and if something would come up, that's where it would come from. But as far as I know, these were the only things left to purchase for the remainder of the year.
Yeah, other than, uh, the IV pumps have already been encumbered.
Right.
So the only thing we have, uh, on the list yet to be delivered would be the monitors, and is there anything else that...
Well, I have the Lucas compression system.
Those were delivered the other day.
Okay, I haven't paid them yet, and then the patient transport loading system.
Yeah, the cots would be the only other thing outstanding, and you've got it in your figures as well, so we're, and there's nothing else capitalized that's out there other than something catastrophic.
So we'll get the notification on, on the actual increase in June?
That's what I'm told, yeah, June, I think it was 29th, I believe, is what they say.
And when they give us that notification, is the price gonna increase that day, or...
No, July 6th.
It takes a week out of the window, then, one week.
Not a lot.
Right around July 4th, perfect.
That's what I'm saying, it's gonna be in the budget season and everything else, so just taking consideration, once we get the information we may have.
Now we might maybe do seven, do the seven, and then do the next five? I don't know, I don't, I'd see how much it does go up. Could it, could it go up more than five, or that, yeah, I mean, they're just throwing that out, they...
They called it, they called it a modest increase, so to find that, or you will, I don't know.
It's a lot like computer software, it can go up 20%, something can happen worldwide, another catastrophe in Japan, harsher, who knows? I mean, it is a dice roll, that's why we're here talking.
So basically, if it goes up in June, and then we, all of a sudden, it's like 15% or something like that, then we might wanna just go ahead and buy them all?
That's why we're here talking to you, trying to give you as much advanced information as possible.
We can bring it back, I mean, I just, I'm just leaning to just buying them all, so, just let you guys know where I'm at, but...
When I get the hard numbers, I'll put it back on.
If it's 5% or more, I think I would, too, yeah.
We know it's at least five, we, we know that. Right now, today, we can guarantee at least five, could be 20, but at least five. You have a pseudo hard number in front of you.
But, I mean, we can wait, but I don't, I don't know that we really wanna wait till the end of June. But if you want to, we can, so. Just need to get it back on the agenda so that we can get something decided.
What funds are there, Debbie, just?
Funds are there to buy 10.
Yeah, just the S2.
So we could, you know, we could buy 10 and push the other two to, after a price increase, which, yeah.
We do the 10 now, and then the two, the first quarter of, of, uh, 2016, as we, we can modify the phasement plans, 10 now, and then the two, first quarter next year, knowing that at least 5% increase.
What do you think, Mr. Jeff?
And we'd still be able to keep all 12 on the same maintenance agreement? That would be the easiest thing to do, is 10 now and then two, first quarters next year?
I'm leaning towards getting them all at one time, but if we're gonna get all of them at one time, get all 12. So if we could wait till June, and we can go over the numbers and crunch them and see if we got money for all 12, I'd prefer to do that. And I don't care if we put it back on the agenda next week, we don't have to punt it to the end of June.
Right.
If you know it's gonna be at least 5%, which, somebody can say a modest increase, and, you know, a modest increase of about 20%, but...
The 5% is at least, I guarantee you that, it's at least 5%. That 5 could turn into 20, 10, 15, who knows, but at least, a pseudo hard number is you're looking at a 5% at least.
Well, if we did 12, we'd have to take money out of contingency. I don't know what they have in contingency, which...
All right, why don't you look that up, and then we'll put it on the agenda till the next time? Or we're gonna wait?
That's, it don't matter.
I mean, we're just moving right along.
We're almost done, you gotta go?
I gotta pee.
Are we the last one on the agenda?
No, we, no, we have, that's right.
Go to the next thing, what's the next thing?
Windows.
Oh, Lord, windows?
Do you all have, have to put it on for this, please? Guys, do you wanna hear a bid out?
Yes.
As much as I don't want to, yes.
We have two bids, but yeah, that's...
We don't, we don't have any bids. Yeah, we, we have a cost estimate.
Oh, we do, we put it after bid.
What, Larry, you don't like your water feature?
The girls actually moved the plants in the office under the windows.
So they get watered? Well, that's good. They're doing well, then, huh? Got a little sauna going on when the sun shines in there, too, then, huh? Do what? 800 in, in contingency.
And EMS?
EMS, um, cap, sales, not in their enterprise form. But we buy all this stuff out of cap.
Okay, so back to the windows, I, I, my opinion is that we bid it, we try to bid it so that we can do all of it, a portion of it, uh, maybe split up the courthouse even more so, so that maybe, I don't know, if there's two sides that are worse than the other two sides as far as leakage or whatever, I mean, I don't, I don't know that, but... Okay, I mean, I would like to, I'd like to be able to do it all, but probably that's not gonna happen, so let's try to address the, the ones that are the worst right now, and then maybe next year, we can address the others. That's the same, same way, yeah. I mean, that's, that's just my two cents, so...
Well, we can't do it, yeah, this building, we, we're holding off on doing maintenance until we do something with the windows, so, yeah, let's...
So you wanna price suffer from that building to this building? You want them to decide which is the worst windows, or do you want Greg to tell them how many windows we're replacing?
Give us one all-inclusive bid, too.
Yeah, so we want, yeah, one to do everything.
One maybe for...
Anex in the courthouse, and then one to, for each building, and then maybe even break it down a little further to do half of the courthouse, so the, the worst two sides or whatever, and then, and then the other two sides.
Just start leaking like that, Larry? Have you had a waterfall the whole time?
No, it's leaked for a long time.
So you've had a free waterfall.
But this is probably, but it was a very heavy rain.
If you end up with your own swimming pool, we're gonna be jealous.
Do you have some, uh, recommendations based on some of the cost estimates that we have gotten on what types of windows need to go back in, and what, what do you want?
So you're looking at me to answer, you're looking at the wrong person.
So you and Greg can get, get together, and let's get the right windows put in the right way, and, um...
So the windows are gonna have all a different story than what I think is the right one?
Well, that's why, you know, I think when you bid anything, you have to have something that you want.
Yeah.
And then you have a, an equal, um...
This would've won for equal or better?
Yeah.
Or a window that doesn't leak?
And I gotta be put in right?
Put in right.
That's where your warranty comes in, so...
Would you get them low E for the sun coming in, or...
We can get curtains.
Not for me? For everybody. I would think you'd want it to be low E, as big as they are, the sun would come through on them.
Okay. I get you what you need, Jennifer?
I might have more questions, but it gets me started.
Do you want to switch back to monitor? If that's all right?
Is this mine?
Yeah, you can. Just keep you all reminded that this would be one of the largest, uh, or is gonna be the largest equipment as far as the remodel and dispatch, as far as our medical equipment. Once you get this out of the way, other than routine equipment, vehicles, ambulances, the trivial type capital, I think that you would serve, this would be one of the substantial ones we would have taken off the table for the next five to eight years, so just keep that in mind, hearing what we have in contingency and what we have available in, in capital, uh, it's very easy to get them all at once and be done, but...
I think that sounds like that's what we're most, most inclined to do.
I mean, it, we're gonna take it out of contingency this year, but they're gonna have a surplus of money left in capital next year, 'cause they'd have the same $280,000, basically, that we would be spending on, yeah, well on these life packs.
Well, that's true, you just could do some creative accounting and take it.
If you guys wanna look at that spreadsheet that's out there, the long-term planning, there is a tab that is the EMS capital.
Mm-hmm.
And we, you know, I said on, we went out 10 to 15 years of how often things would need to be replaced.
Was that under RF drive or commission F drive?
Uh, commission.
Under county-wide long-range planning?
Yeah.
I mean, basically, all you'd have next year in capital would be some of those cots.
That's what I'm saying, it, five, eight years from now, we, we do it right now.
Mm-hmm.
Going five, eight years in future, we'll, we'll say 10.
Right.
Because a Life Pac 12, what we do now is pushing 15, 16 years, so...
10 years.
If the Life Pac Fifteens roll like windows XP did, we should be able to hold on to those for at least 10 years, so looking at that, uh, we just have vehicle replacement.
But that's not under capital?
Uh, the vehicle, you know, like the, the QRB.
Oh, right, right.
And then ambulances.
Right.
And then your cots.
Right, so the...
And other miniscule, uh, equipment stuff.
Your other vehicles come under capital, but your ambulances do not.
Yeah, I don't know.
So...
The ambulances are separate from our response vehicles.
That's correct, right, Debbie? The ambulances aren't in that 500,000 of capital?
No.
Okay. The 500,000 would include like the QRB and the director's vehicle and other than?
Whatever it comes to that, I just see in that spreadsheet, I put it all together, but in this year's budget, vehicles are separated from the other 500,000.
Okay, so aside from the two extra vehicles we have, you have the ambulances, and then you have the other response vehicles that we have on the fleet, that's the only other things you're looking at? things you're looking at, other than miniscule cots, a suction, or a...
A computer, right, and plug just 30,000 in there for a computer. Not that you would get that every year, but I just plug something in there, it was...
But from a big-ticket, holy cow item, this would be off the table for the next five to eight years.
It's in there, I think I divided it six this year, six next year, and then we skipped five years, and then I put it back in there.
That sheet, we included monies to keep up with the replacement of that technology.
When any maintenance or anything goes into the regular enterprise budget, it doesn't come out of capital?
Do you wanna wait till June? I'll just go ahead and...
Well, looking at it, that we have the money in it for, this year, we've already got budgeted for next year for this stuff, if we wanna go ahead and go with it, we're going with the twelve of them, right?
Yeah, yeah, well...
Go ahead, Sam, I'm sorry.
Well, minimum a five percent increase, and it could be more than that, and if we've got the money, I'd almost say let's...
I would never dare tell you what to do, as far as recommendation, it's act now. We know it's at least gonna be five, I guarantee it's gonna be more than that.
Yeah.
We have the funds available, we are not gonna be in the red as far as Debbie's calculations.
Well, it's, I'm fine with that, we can kick this, we're just saying the same thing over and over, we're busy.
Keep the ship moving, keep the ship moving.
Ship, P, right?
Ship, yeah, ship, yes. Boat.
Well, we just got down talking about a sewer line. Make sure everybody's on the same page. That's kinda what, you were okay with that, too, but you were talking about ten or twelve, or we're gonna do twelve?
I'd say we just do the twelve.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, make sure we're on the same page. So, Public Works can take the money that we spent extra today that you are gonna save over the five percent.
So do we need to, do we need to bring this back, or we just wanna go ahead and do...
Fine with this, since we had it in the budget for this year, next year to buy them.
But we're gonna have to transfer out of contingency to pay for it.
Right, that's fine, and then next year can reimburse the contingency fund, right?
Yeah.
So...
Correct, you reduce your capital, and it would make up the...
And you got them all on the maintenance schedule, and you've already got the budgeted for five years, which we're gonna have to replace them again, and swap that bill, and...
Do you need any action from us, then, or just directions?
It was a bid, so...
It was a bid, yeah.
Awarded that bid, and, or did it already award?
It's been awarded for five, and so, they did have something in there that they would honor it, you know, the line item pricing, so I'm not really exactly sure what needs to happen, but...
So I move we purchased twelve Life Pack Fifteens this year.
All in favor?
Guys, kind of on a separate but very related note, that Life Pack increase is across the board, so that's gonna include the Lucas for next year. I think that's only gonna be a couple grand difference, but I did just wanna throw that out there, too.
Just wait on that one.
Yeah.
You got all kinds of rosy colored...
These are substantially less, the Lucas are not as much as the, so, yeah.
No, it says she's got all kinds of rosy colored...
I don't care what you... Yeah.
We just gotta make sure the maintenance agreements, you know, the ten Lucas, twelve monitors.
They submit those to us after we order them.
Okay. By golly.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much, thank you.
Thank you.
When's the next remount going in?
We should be sending it down to Osage in August. They completed the first remount quicker than anticipated, so, if it goes in August, we may see it in December, so just to be cautious, and understand that, remember last time, we were, a little before the official budget was approved, so keep that in mind. They're starting to get the remounts done a bit faster.
Slow down, budget years, we can't, budget years.
Yeah, tell them to slow down.
Put us on the bottom of this or something like that, do it.
Tell them they're not getting a check until after the first of the year.
It's approved.
They can hang on to the ambulance for a while.
We're doing it out of this year, right?
Oh, do we, okay, I don't know.
Yeah, we got another one in this year's.
Yeah, we're doing it out of this year, so we're gonna save, it's just, the next one goes...
Will the next one go in December?
Yeah, we have to be cautious to anticipate a February, March delivery date.
Got any other issues come before the commission? Larry, you got anything?
Nope. He's got issues, Bill.
So we table that till next week, could you do what on the HVC?
Figure out if they wanna come and talk to us about their bid.
Butchers.
Maybe, I just wanna give them opportunity, if they ever wanna come up here and try to change our minds, whatever, since we have not awarded, well, awarded the bid, but we did not sign a contract, so, I guess technically, if we want to, we can back out with it.
Maybe.
Yeah, I'll give them opportunity. Pretty much, I'll call it back.
I have it in the car.
What are you laughing at? Sam? My cousin.
I heard... Okay. We're gonna recess until 4:30 PM today. We did this in an hour, yeah, I did...
You worked on Josh, and you go, I was worried about that, 'cause his dog's...
That's really pretty good.
That is good.
Do you wanna, you wanna serve any, you wanna serve any?